Board of County Commissioners meeting for Deschutes County. Looking forward to the meeting today. We seem like we've been in meetings all day yesterday on all sorts of things. So this will be good to get just a business meeting out of the way and lots of other interactions and engagements, including the state of the county with Ben Chamber, which seemed some we went were at and it seemed like it went pretty well. At least people felt that way. Thank our staff for doing such a good job preparing it and getting our passes out for the fair and all that sort of thing. So thanks, Eric, for that. So please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on this morning's agenda is citizen input. If there's anyone here that has something to talk about that's not on the agenda, we have blue forms up here to fill out and turn into sharing. But if you are here and want to do that and haven't filled out the form, you can speak first and then fill out the form. Is there anybody here that wants to do that? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any questions or comments, commissioners, on any of the items on the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda today.
I second it.
Any further discussion? I just, I will highlight that this includes the transfer of a quick claim being to the city of Ben for a kind of clarifying the title on a property and what's called a reversionary interest. And we got some good confirmation that they do intend to use that as an affordable housing project. I'm hoping there's a way we can kind of monitor that. I don't know that we're really that much of a contributor to it, but it seems like we are since we're giving the deed. But it was, thanks for the follow-up and getting that. And Dave, did you have any thoughts on that or?
I'm sure James has looked in on what the city will do, so he can kind of be the watchdog.
You want to come up for just a second?
There we go. This is item number four.
Yeah, on the agenda.
Yes, as Commissioner Henderson said, the city intends to use this for affordable housing. And it's a quick claim that removes a reversionary clause that if it was not used for some public purpose, and affordable housing is one of those items listed in statutes that we're allowed to use property for, for public purpose, that it would revert back to the county. There was some question as to whether the reversion had already been removed, but this clarifies it. And in response to when we had a work session, the city submitted a letter, bullet pointing detailing what they intend to do. And they've been, over the past couple of years, we had another reversion that we removed, that they're proactive in seeking these properties that they have, a lot of remnant properties, and using them for affordable housing, which is a, which is a good use.
It sounds like it's worked out well then.
Yes.
So Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair Boach, yes?
Thank you.
So we'll move on to our action items today. We have three different Oregon Health Authority agreements to discuss. I think we'll just, we'll do them one at a time, or if there's someone different to speak to each one, you can all three come up now, or however many there are. So we have, these are items, document number 2019-439, and then 487, and then 491. We decided to put this on the consent agenda just because I think as we try to understand how the health department works, we, you know, you can look at these, we realize that these are the contracts we're signing to get the funding we get. But it's kind of interesting to see how it is all put together. And so I know we'll all have some questions about those and to understand that better. So welcome each of you. And I guess we'll start, Janice, with you on the first one. And oh, I guess you gave us a summary here, so, which will help us. So that, is this, you prepared this for today, right?
I did, but this morning.
Good.
So my apologies for getting to you late in the game. I'm Janice Garceau, Deputy Director of Behavioral Health. And the first item on the agenda is a request for consideration of board signature of document number 2019-439. It's the Oregon Health Authority IGA that provides for intellectual and developmental disability services. So I did summarize what I think are notable differences. The document basically describes expectations for the delivery of services within a community developmental disabilities program. It's quite lengthy, as you know, because I think your agenda packet is close to 1,000 pages or something like that.
Quite a chunk.
The new agreement is really not significantly changed from the previous biennium, with the exception that it provides greater clarity regarding certain areas of work being provided within the IDD program. Specifically, those changes involve a program called Assistance, well, it's, it's, I'm sorry, I skipped ahead in the bullets. The first change is that it further clarifies the responsibility of IDD programs to provide assistance with provider and employer enrollment credentials and payments. So while our IDD program is not in the role of being an employer, they do have a role in assisting individuals to hire personal support workers. And so the contract just contains some new language that spells out details around that role.
But, you know, I, I did go through the contract just to kind of understand it. And so what is, what prompted that new position? And is that somebody we already have hired? Or is that be new hiring we do for that?
It's not a new position. It's just really clarifying what an IDD program is expected to do to support people who are trying to hire personal support workers. And that can be a really difficult process, because if you can imagine, there's lots of bureaucracy around those kinds of activities. And when you're trying to hire someone who maybe has not been employed to provide personal support work to a person with an intellectual or developmental disability, they may not be prepared for all the steps they have to go through to do that. I don't know what prompted the change. It may be that people with IDD or their guardians were advocating for that change. I don't know.
The role that our, the departments played before the employees there have been to get people to the jobs or to find jobs, things, but there's not been somebody working with the employer end of it, so.
Well, this is really around personal support workers. So our role is that a person with an intellectual or developmental disability may identify someone in the community that would like to be their personal support worker. And they get paid for that, that job duty. And the state has rules and a process by which they're approved to be paid to provide those services. But as an IDD program, we try to help support people through that process. And this just further clarifies the things we should be doing to support people as they're trying to get someone hired to be their caregiver, really. The second piece is a new database. It's called the Centralized Abuse Management System, or otherwise known as CAM. It will be used to record and report on all allegations of abuse and neglect, as well as 10 additional categories of serious incidents. So as you know, we have the role of investigating abuse allegations for, in our IDD department. So this is simply a database system that allows that work to be recorded electronically. Of course, that's going to mean impacts to workflows and training to operationalize that system. And so the contract just spells out that this system will be adopted. One thing to note about that is that the standards and procedures for the CAM are not finalized. When they are, it's likely that there'll be some sort of contract amendment to reflect that. The last piece that's important is that the legislatively approved budget, approved funding for IDD at 81.9% of what was recommended in the workload model forecast. And then there was a parity activity on the part of OHA and DHS that established 95% of the workload model as the amount that would be allocated. So while that's not ideal, and there are some concerns about funding, it does represent an overall small increase in the amount of revenue going to IDD programs around the state. So those are the primary.
Can I ask, there's like 28,777 development disabled that are identified per the meeting I was just at. How many of them are in Deschutes County?
I believe our current caseload is, well, I can't speak to how many are in Deschutes County. I can say that our caseload is over 600 at this point.
Over 600?
I believe so. That was the last report I saw. And that was a significant increase. It was 12 or 19%. I'm trying to picture the budget presentation in my head, but it was a significant percent increase this year over last year.
Okay.
Questions?
No questions.
What does it mean when it says the, or the sentence here, parity was established at 95%? You said that they did some adjustments. So they, what does that mean?
So Paul Partridge is probably more expert than I am on this process. But basically what happens is the IDD programs have a very sophisticated workload model that works to look at the amount of work being done, changes in population, and a number of other factors to determine what revenue is needed, what positions should be in place in each county. Then the Oregon State Budget Process through the legislature determines what percent of that recommended budget are we actually going to fund. And then OHA has some opportunity to establish what they call parity or to make the program perhaps more whole by moving some dollars around. So they were able to do that at the 95% level of the recommended.
So after the legislature said, here's how much we're going to give you for this fund.
They make some adjustments.
It's an inter-agency OHA decision of, we've got some other funds over here to.
I believe so.
At the back of this packet, kind of went, there's a, the budgets. And I was just trying to understand these. I don't know if you have the packet there, or can?
I have the, the IGA. I don't have your entire packet. I have.
There's a, there's two pages at the back, which kind of goes down through allocated positions, and.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Okay, I just was curious. And then there's a second part, which is costs allocable to case management. And one is, comes up to, it's cut off, but it's 6,311,000 and something. And then the next one is, is like 4 million, but I, I thought this, and I was trying to figure out what, that seems like that's more than the six thou, so this is 3,000, 3,155,000 a year. So that'd be 6.2 million, which would be kind of consistent with the first, maybe matches the first page. But I was trying to understand what's, is this, if you, if you don't have it, I don't know. Oh, you've got it there now?
So you're talking about this document and this document?
Yeah, there's, they're the last two pages of our packet. So one of them is called allocated positions. And so that, I assume, are people that work in our, in our department.
Correct.
And so our, and that 6.3 million is pretty close to two times the budget that's listed here. Maybe exactly it. I don't know. I was wondering, is that where the, the funding goes to? Or does part of it come from this, I guess my big question is, does part of it come from the state? Or all of it come from the state for this program?
The vast majority of funding for IDD comes through the, through the state IGA. And then we have a county match that we participate in. So if we meet certain targets for the provision of services, then county general fund provides some match dollars, which allows us to get the percentage of match from the state in addition. So, and Cheryl probably knows the exact percent.
It has to do with the parity. So we're, there's, there's no match, there's standard match, and then there's maximum match. And each one of those is a different level of funding based on the number of encounters that we end up having. And also the amount of general fund that we're able to put in.
So do you, do you have any insight on these two budgets? And I mean, one comes up to 5.5 million, and the other one's 6.5, or maybe they're redundant, or maybe, I mean, it looks like some of the positions are, I'm just curious, they're just different numbers?
Oh. And these different service elements?
Yeah, it is rather interesting, isn't it?
This one's the admin, IDD admin. This is case management. And then this one, 55, is a, the pass, the hook?
Oh, okay. So the, so these budgets down below are really more related to our project codes. So we have, Cheryl just told me what they are. I don't have them in front of me. But we have an IDD admin project code, and we have the overarching case management services project code. So that's how those are funded.
So what do they tell us? It's just?
They tell you the dollars we get to provide those services. So there's a big chunk of dollars for case management services, which is the vast majority of the work that IDD does. And then there is a certain amount of dollars, much smaller as you can see, for administering an IDD program. It's sort of like service element one in the OHA behavioral health contract that says, hey, we know it costs money to administer these programs, and so some dollars are provided for that. So it's a similar model for funding.
It looks complicated. I, yeah.
Well, Janice, isn't it true it's a biennium contract, but the funding is annual?
The funding is annual and the contract is biennial.
Often times the dollars might look doubly inflated, but it's, because it's capturing the biennium, but the contract is funding on a yearly basis.
Yeah, what I'm trying to square up is that the, in the cover sheet, it says the fiscal implications are 3.155 million, which if you double it, 62 or 63 or, you know, and that's, but these budgets, it looks like they're redundant, because these would add up to about 11 million, so it doesn't.
This is the budget that comes out of the work that DHS does, that ODDS does, the Oregon Department for Developmental and Disability Services. What we receive in our contract are the annual amounts related to the biennial contract. So David is right. We, we get information about what funding we're getting this year in our contract. And then there's a biennial budget that entities at the state are tracking. And typically it's doubled. Sometimes it may be a little bit more in year two just because of planning for inflation or additional workload.
Is it possible to get these sheets without the last column cut off, just for our records? Page, packet page 112, 13, and 14?
Yes.
They've cut off the left, the right-hand column. Just, it would, yeah.
I don't know if there's another column. It may just be the line that didn't print, but I will send it to you. I have it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good. I don't have any other questions. We can probably get some further clarification later on this, just to understand it. Any questions from anybody else? Comments?
So what I'm seeing, so 3.155 million is half of that 6.3 million, and that's the total number. And then this, the 500, 5 million is kind of the services, the case services. So it's a different way to report on it, minus the administration is what I'm thinking I'm seeing. So we're taking the services from the administrative overhead of the contract for reporting purposes.
Here's, you're basically saying you think they are kind of redundant. They're just, they're the same money, explained two ways. Is that a way of saying it? Okay, that, that was my guess, but I couldn't really tell. So, you know. And the matching amounts are somewhere else then? Do you have to reveal to them how much gets matched, or?
Yes.
Further questions? Commissioner Dare, thoughts?
So how many caseloads do you think we had last year then?
The number was in the 500. We had 500 and some individuals. We've gone up to 600 and some individuals.
So it was 500?
And I can send you the exact numbers, because we track them.
I was just, I was talking to someone who was at the head of the program, and they were allocating, when I got done, they were asking for like 153 million for the state. And when you average that out to the 28,000, whatever, it was like $450 a month. And I was going, is that what we actually spend? I mean, they didn't get their ask, but that's what they were asking for. And I was just going like, okay, is that what we're, you know, what are we spending?
I don't know that we've broken down what we spend per individual, but it wouldn't surprise me if that would be a monthly amount for somebody with IDD that's receiving case management, perhaps some pass-through dollars for, for employment opportunities, perhaps dollars to pay care workers who are working to support them, although that comes out of a different pot of money.
So if somebody's working at Albertson's under this program?
Yeah.
What kind of support are they getting then?
They're getting support through us in terms of case management. So our case management person would be liaising with, for example, Opportunity Foundation that does a lot of work to help support people in employment. Opportunity Foundation will be doing things like working with the employer to understand what this person's abilities or limitations might be. They'll be doing coaching with the individual. Sometimes there are skills classes that the individual receives so that they're prepared to do the job. And we're doing the coordinating with the individual, perhaps the guardian, the employer, and with Opportunity Foundation around the work they're doing with the client.
So do you think you're working with those 600 people like every month? If they're part of your, part of your case? If they're part of your, part of your case?
Definitely.
Okay.
I see the number of encounters every month, so.
Okay.
People are having some level of contact monthly. Mostly, I mean, unless they've dropped out of services or.
They moved.
Moved.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I want to do all three of them at once, or do you want to get approvals as we go?
We can do it as we go.
Okay.
I'll move board signature of document number 2019-439, Oregon Health Authority Agreement.
I'll second it.
Any comments? Thanks for walking us through it. It's, you know, like I said, it's part of our understanding how this works. One question I did have, I forgot to ask, was, so when you went in and, or someone formed this budget, because we've just watched this legislature do all this, and it comes out that the legislature ends up at 81%. Was that 81% across the board for all counties or ours was 81? Okay, so, so some mass, or big decisions made about funding of these programs?
Yes.
And then, then we work from there. Did everybody get the 95% parity? Do you know?
I believe that's statewide as well.
Okay. So it's a pretty, and this is a.
13%.
And, and how many years has this been working this way roughly? Do you know?
I think there's some history.
Oh, yeah, there was.
On IDD, but I, I don't know exactly how many years the funding model has worked this way, but I believe that since 2001, the Department of Human Services has been overseeing IDD services.
Yeah, you do have the history here about that, so it's.
Yeah.
And did we, in our process of lobbying, was this something we lobbied, so to speak, or your department lobbies or?
Well, we don't lobby. We don't get to do that, but we certainly provided information.
I mean, the word broadly.
Yes, we, we provided.
People talk to people.
Information about what we think the real need is. And we provided information to the statewide organization, which is connected to AOC MHP, the Association of Oregon Community Mental Health Programs, about what the impacts would be of reductions. So we, we do that every year and we certainly provide information to people who lobby on our behalf, but we don't lobby directly.
Thanks. So Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair both, yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the next one, which is.
I'll be right back.
2019-487.
Public health.
Public health, yep.
Good morning, commissioners. Hillary, for the record, Hillary Saracino, Deschutes County Health Services, Public Health Division. First of all, the IGA last biennium went through quite a major redo because of the public health modernization. And you'll notice in the contract, there are these little tables related to the public health modernization. This year, there were slight changes, nothing noteworthy really, other than date changes and things like that. So what we really want to talk about is the changes in the budget, which is on page 115. And I did provide you a summary as well in terms of kind of what, just kind of an overview of what's happened. The good news is that there were some special projects that were funded at the state level. One of those is, there was an additional $10 million in state general funds added to public health modernization, which was one of the ones we were anxiously awaiting to hear about. So that brings the total of 5 million up to 15 million for investment in public health modernization. We do not know yet. There's been some different theories or formulas that have been put out there, but there has not been a final one distributed, so I'm not, I'm cautious in terms of what our portion of that will be. What I do know, the last cloak call that we had, Coalition of Local Health Officials, was that the state really wanted to prioritize first funding those that had the grants last biennium that were true regional collaborative projects such as ours. Deschutes, Jefferson and Creek Counties Collaborative is one of those eight projects. So we are in good shape for that. There is one region that may be dissolving, and those monies will go back into the pot with this new money. And the state is working on a formula to distribute. What we, we hope, what we don't know, is that some of those, those funds will come to Deschutes County for Deschutes County work. The second piece was, I think I shared with you, that there was, due to medical marijuana tax reductions with the legalization of marijuana, that there was some funding that was used for comical disease that was sort of, we didn't have adequate amounts. So the legislature did vote to put 5.5 million to fill that gap, which is good news for us. And then there's a 4.7 general fund investment for the first phase of a universal volunteer home visiting program. Again, we are one of the counties that will be, or regions that will be in line for that. Again, the first year will be for planning and coordination. And then there's also a big training component involved. The second year will be again, implementation, first with OHP clients. And then the third year implementation will expand it out to universal. So private insurances will then be billed for that service.
This, this is the program of state or county employees visiting each home once before giving services or?
This is the nurse home visiting program during that critical point of contact.
But it is totally voluntary.
Yes, and it's, and at that point, there's a number of screenings that are done. And from that point of contact, any needs that are addressed, are identified, are then, the client is then referred. And there's also some case, case management involved. But it's during that critical time.
Yeah, I remember Charles.
Yeah. So that was the good news. So we have kind of a mixed bag in terms of, some stayed the same, some went up a little, some went down a little. Some funding goes away because we knew it was going to go away when we came in to do the budget presentation, which is where we said we were losing some grant funds. And then we have some new funds that we are happy about. The, the other challenge we have with our IGA is that several of the program elements, which is our funding streams, were only issued a three-month allocation with the notation that the, the following three quarters, we would receive the remaining funds. The challenge is, we don't know what the amount is going to be based on the OHA-approved budget yet. We're assuming the same, we're hoping the same, but we don't know for fact yet what it's going to be. And that's including that new program element 51, which is now public health modernization funds. We have a couple of programs that saw a slight increase, which was the maternal-child health program and our immunization services. We have some decreases in our Ryan White Emergency Preparedness WIC program and our school-based health. School-based health center, we're still trying to work with behavioral health because some of that, I think, is impacting.
Well, there was a, yeah, there was a $50,000 glitch. The, the money is specifically for mental health expansion grant, which is the behavioral health consultants in the schools. And because OHA changed how they were allowing public health agencies to opt in or out of receiving the mental health expansion grant dollars, our Klamath County partner for whom we provide services in Gilcrest wasn't aware that they needed to let the state know that we were still going to receive those dollars. So the dollars went straight to the medical partner who said, we don't want them. We want your behavioral health person, so that's all being sorted out. But that amount may change by 50,000.
And that money comes to public health and then is transferred to behavioral health. It's one of those, there's two line items for school-based health center. The programs that were eliminated, which we knew, the prescription drug overdose federal grant sunsets in September, and that's reflected in the approved budget. Then the other one that we, we knew was, was sort of hanging out there is reproductive health, and that's pending the national discussion and decisions around reproductive health and what, what happens with that. So we've got kind of a big question mark there. Then we had some added program elements, 36 Alcohol and Drug Prevention Education Program. And then, of course, the public health modernization is now a program element, meaning it is part of the public health budget that is carried over from one biennium to the next. We wanted to have a nice, neat, little total amount difference between the approved budget and what this means. We have a lot of factors that we had, are trying, we, we wanted to give you a number we felt confident in, and we're working on that.
Did you do that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was, now on page one, the budget, page 115, 116. It, it looks like the award balance and the new award balance, they don't show any differences. So does that mean, is that not updated or, because it sounds like you got more than you thought, less than you thought, et cetera? And some, what, how does this compare with what your summary sheet says?
This, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, yeah. So we'll go through a number of amendments. And that's where you'll see the increase or decrease. So the award balance and the new award balance is identical because this is where we start with this IGA.
So the left column is really where you're starting, and then there's going to be put, stuff put in the middle column that'll affect the right column?
Throughout the year.
Throughout the year, we come to you with amendments that will show up in that middle column, and then there'll be a little notation of what that change is. So when we, for example, the, the program elements that are funded for three months, we'll get an amendment that will show up in that middle column. We will come to you to approve those funds.
So as an example, that number one item is, is 54,000. That's a three-month budget for that. So that's one of the ones, okay, so we can follow it. So one of the questions I had, just looking through this, it was interesting. So everything has a number, all these programs. Well, what are, but they're not consecutive, so there's all these gaps. So what are all those programs and why are, why do we not get those or those ones that have been erased or?
It's a combination. They don't duplicate the program elements. Once the program element has been assigned, it isn't used again. So some of those are programs that are no longer funded. That's happened over the years, so it's sort of just a.
It kind of reads like a menu, you know, like we got.
They do put it in order, that's the.
Yeah, that's good. No, it's helpful.
Is that helpful?
It was interesting to see that, how it's presented in the IGA. And then looking at the summary, and I was just curious what the, is it, because I was left wondering, was there programs we wish we could get involved in or, but I suppose this is, there aren't, or are there?
In the past, there may have been. I know there's been a few with environmental health that we would have liked to have been, but it had to be a rural community. We were not. I mean, sometimes there are limitations to qualifying. It varies. So 51 is a new one, so I'm assuming 52, if they have a new one, will be the next one.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So was our WIC program really going down here in Deschutes?
It is, and Parsonett's Economy is doing well, which is not unusual. It's happening statewide, nationwide. So with that, the needs gone down, therefore, there's a slight decrease in the funding.
Okay.
Questions, Commissioner DeBonne?
No.
And then kind of getting about budgeting for these, these programs. So is that something that you prepare a request budget or are you part of a big statewide? Do all count, or all counties do it, get the same percentages or whatever?
For public health, the formulas vary by program element, and they're negotiated through the Coalition of Local Health Officials. That's where there's input given. And then a decision is made. Their recommendation is sent to the Oregon Health Authority that then prepares their budget for the governor. The governor does what they want, and then they present it to the legislature.
Coalition of local?
Health officials. It's all the directors in the state. It's our coalition. They meet monthly.
And so you have meetings to figure out how much you're going to, and you vote on those things and?
We do anytime there's a change to a program element, or like right now, the big hot one is tobacco. There's a lot of conversation happening about some reductions in the tobacco prevention and education program. So there's a lot of debate about how and, between us and the state, about how that should work.
Is there anything specific to marijuana and minors in the program? There's a drug prevention, alcohol and drug prevention.
There's alcohol, tobacco and drug prevention, and that is, that's new. Program element 36 is one that we've had, but it wasn't a, it's for the coordinator, prevention coordinator. For every county is required to have a prevention coordinator, is to help cover those costs. So most of the funding that we get is either tobacco, or what grants we brought in is for alcohol, to address alcohol. That's just where the federal grants are, not as many for marijuana.
What about vaping?
And vaping, that's a, a new trend, and that fits under tobacco or should.
Yes.
So it's, again, the, the, we don't know what the resources are going to be. That's one where we have three months of funding, and there's a debate about how much locals will get in the future.
This is only 33,000.
That's three months.
Three months, so that's not very much.
When I know there's a 300 or $400,000 marijuana tax revenue, something to the health department, I'm just thinking, where is that going at all, or is that allocated?
Behavioral health allocation, and that's, those, there are separate funding streams, and there's some funding streams that are specific to public, or to behavioral health, and.
Well, that helps. So behavioral health is the recipient of those dollars.
Which makes sense.
It's interesting, though. It seems like it should be in the prevention side on public health, just like tobacco, alcohol, whatever.
That is one of the things we're trying to with the.
What is, I mean, for juveniles, I mean.
I'm just thinking, yeah, which program does it go to? There's the two.
Used to be our juvenile justice department put in funds for youth prevention programs. 1% of their budget used to go to that. Those were in the days when we had more resources. That was how we got about $800,000 a year for youth prevention work.
Last question for me is, so did, like Janice had done the explanation that they got 81%, then they went to 95% parity. What, is this budget treated that way too? Did you, is there something that they do in the health department or?
No, they just, it's just based on the funding formula, part of that. Many of them are based on population. But there's now bringing in other factors like your poverty, your.
But I mean, the total amount to public health, did it, was it what was asked, or was it less than was asked? Or is there a way to look at that the way that we?
No, because we don't ask. We don't, that's not something that we, it is based on what the legislature approves and.
I mean, across the board, there were not a lot of increases. And so when you have, when you have normal inflation and you get the same amount or less than the previous biennium, that in effect is a slight decrease. And that, I think, is a shared experience across public and behavioral health and ID.
And that's an unfortunate trend in the last 10, 10 years, probably, since the Great Recession, if you will. That sort of changed. It used to be you got current service level CSL, which was a percent increase based on.
Predictable increased cost, yeah.
But the state Medicaid funding, though, has gone up 10% in the last 10 years.
Medicaid expansion is probably what saved primary care and behavioral health care.
But the state is picking up another 10% for that.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
As match.
It went up to 38% and it, yeah.
It was 28?
Mm-hmm, 10 years ago, yeah.
And that's, that, those dollars are involved in, as you said.
They impact the.
Yeah, they, those dollars are involved differently than the service element dollars that come through the state budget process. They're involved through the CCO contracts, as you know, and then also through our reimbursement in fee-for-service models. And I, you know, public health has some contracts with the CCO as well for the provision of healthcare services, not just mental health services.
And we also have some of those Medicaid match requirements, like in our home, nurse home visiting program, nurse family support services. So we have match requirement. You'll see those come through on vouchers.
Good, thanks. So motion and support.
Let's see, I move, we, for board signature of document number 2019-487, the IGA with the Oregon Health Authority.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Chair both, yes. Thanks for providing the summary sheets again. That was great, so.
And we'll see in a few months on some of those topics.
Yeah.
You will, because one of the things we're very cognizant of is we receive the public health modernization funds. You all approved in our budget a 52,500 bridge fund. So we will need to come back and resolve, we want to do that, we want, in good faith, bring that back for discussion.
All right, move on to 2019-491, the third IGA.
Me?
Who's?
Want me to start, or do you want to start?
Sure. I was on here, this is for the behavioral health state IGA. I was on there. We were unsure if Janice would be able to make it, but.
Here I am.
Here you are. I will not.
Good.
Take that from you.
Appreciate both of you coming.
So we are again asking for board. So we are, again, asking for board approval for a signature on the IGA one five nine one six three, or otherwise known as document number two oh one nine four four nine one. This is the IGA with the Oregon Health Authority for behavioral health services. I did do a summary. There's a little bit more detail here. Most amounts remain the same as in the previous biennium. There's one significant exception, and I'll talk a little bit about what that is and why. And as I, as we just discussed, this equates to an overall reduction in our state funding just because it does not, it's the same level as two years ago. And doesn't necessarily keep a pace with increased cost. The amounts, as you know, are subject to change. So we get these amounts in our contract, and they can change as the budget is being finalized. And we anticipate that that is done by August. That's our hope. So just walking you through some significant changes. One is that the Oregon Health Authority has decided to explore contracting with counties on a, rather than on a biennium fiscal year calendar, on a calendar year calendar. I cannot tell you why.
I noticed that.
We are not, AOC MHP and Community Mental Health Programs are not in support of that. But we, it was very clear to us that we were not being asked whether or not we were agreeing to do that. So the decision has been made. The concession was that they are going to engage in a planning process with Community Mental Health Programs and with counties around, what does this look like? And where do we go from here as we approach next fiscal year? So the contracts now go through December thirty-first, 2020.
That's kind of, so the immediate effect on us is we end up with, we do our budget next year. And we're in June, we're deciding our budget, but we only know six months of the, what the state's going to do.
I hope that that is not the outcome. My fear is that, planning processes being what they are, we may be operating with some unknowns as we go into the budget next year.
It's interesting too, because then the next legislative session starts right after that.
Right.
So how much they allocate to these programs gets decided by the end of June. And so what about that year? That's really interesting.
It'll be important to get engaged next February during legislative month, the short session, to really get some clarity, if at all possible, from the legislature.
Should we be talking to them now, though, honestly?
Yes.
I think, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. We should be asking them what's their plan, and we should be asking sooner than later. And we certainly asked and advocated strongly that there be a planning process that launches basically once the budget is final. So this fall, waiting until next...
Well, in preparation for February. So I guess I'm saying the same thing, because we need to have a clarity before they even get into session.
And you say, "we asked." So "we" is again...
AOC MHP, the Association of Oregon Community Mental Health Programs.
So that's different than the Cloa.
Cloa's Public Health, and hers are the Mental Health Director.
Two separate non-lobbying groups that negotiate this stuff.
Well, AOC MHP works with a lobbying entity.
And so does...
And so does, yeah, interesting.
It's separate from the state for that reason.
Interesting. Okay, but you're saying this is really coming from the OHA is the one that's talking about doing this? Ahead of that, okay.
Yes.
Janice, you think that has any correlation? Aren't the CCO contracts are on a calendar year?
The CCO contracts are on a calendar year, and I wondered about that. But when we were in the phone call, they did not acknowledge that that was the reason. I mean, we really were asking what's prompting this. And I left the meeting with no clarity about why. There's a new director. Maybe that's, who knows? So I think, well, hopefully we'll know more as we begin to have a planning process.
You think that's the case, Dave?
You know, it might be. They're shifting more and more through the CCO process. Maybe that's in preparation to align it with that.
Could be.
All right, good.
So the next item, Service Element Four, that is money for our aid and assist activities. And that is funded only at the three-month level. And that is because of the passage of Senate Bill twenty-four, which requires counties and local jurisdictions to do a bit more around aid and assist. And so there was advocacy for a policy option package of seven point six million dollars to further fund that ask, and that policy option package passed. So we anticipate some additional revenue, although we really have no way to know at this point what that might look like. It's seven point six million for the state. We'll see. So that's why we got three months of funding. Service Element Twelve, I'm highlighting because the current IGA reflects funding for Deschutes County of approximately half of our previous biennium amount. And we, actually Nancy Tyler, who really has overseen that book of business for our agency, contacted the state and said, "What's up? This is a significant change. We weren't anticipating it." And the emails that I've reviewed indicate it was a mistake and an error, and it's being corrected. And I asked for written confirmation of that and was told, "Wait."
Standby.
Standby. So I cannot guarantee that that amount is going to go up. I believe it will. I certainly hope it will. But I, until I have something in writing that says that was an error and we're increasing the amount to reflect what it should be, I can't guarantee that.
And that's, and if I'm reading this right, that's the problem gambling residential services? Is that service, that's number twelve?
Service Element Twelve is rental assistance.
So I was trying to figure out, like in the other one...
And rental assistance has a couple of different components to it.
How do you, going through this? I'm trying to figure out what, or maybe it's the service code, well... I was, the other one we did, the other budget we had, it was really clear when there was a program fifty-one program. So in this one, as we read this, it's not really tabbed or anything, it's just a bunch of the whole papers. Is the service ID code the number that you, when you say it's service element?
The service element is the OHA identifying number for all of the things they expect to be performed under that service element and the funding that's attached. It doesn't always directly align with our project codes.
But there is a service code listed. There are number, item number nine is substance disorder residential and day treatment capacity. And under it says service ID code A and D sixty-seven. Just trying to understand how to, the information's organized.
Yeah, I think that's a service element.
Okay, so...
Another way they talk about it.
So these are different than, these aren't put together with the service codes in order? They're, so defined twelve would be, okay.
So similar, public health is program element, behavioral health is service element.
Oh, okay.
So funding streams related and requirements related to those funding streams. It's the two different languages. They're the same thing, but they're specific to the division.
And in the agreement, you'll see, you mentioned like A and D sixty-one. So that'll be adult substance use disorder or alcohol and drug. And then there's MHS. We use the term service element to keep it consistent. So you won't see SE in the document until you look at the funding amount. Then it'll say SE here.
Another significant change this year is that the way that residential treatment services are funded changed significantly from pass-through dollars sent to counties that went out into the community to residential treatment providers, adult foster homes, et cetera. Now those entities are billing Medicaid directly. So it's an enormous reduction in our service element. Twenty-eight and twenty amounts. But that is not impacting our operating funds. Those are dollars that went through us into the community to support residential treatment services for individuals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that a little bit less administrative management then?
Well, we'll see. We still have to, we're still held responsible to manage some of the, how people get into those facilities. But we do get dollars in other service elements to help support that, so... Other changes? They did add a hundred thousand dollars in Service Element Thirty-four. That is not money that comes to us. That is money that allows us to be reimbursed when we are intending to pay for a service to an indigent or uninsured individual that's in an adult foster home in the community. So we play, we support people being placed in adult foster homes. There may be somebody without, who needs a not-covered service or who is not covered at all and needs a service. The adult foster home may purchase that service. We then ask the state to reimburse us so that we can pay that provider. So we are never out of pocket until we get paid by OHA, in other words. But they're just reimbursement dollars. They really don't support anything that we do, other than cover our cost if we choose to reimburse a provider. But that's a new amount. And that's really there because they were recognizing that we were having to pay for some of those things.
Out of pocket and then wait for...
No, we were asking for, we were invoicing OHA before paying.
How soon do they pay, though?
I don't know. Not fast.
Not fast, I would think.
Not as fast as they want us to do stuff, but...
Exactly.
But they do, they do reimburse us. And they did reflect that that was a real cost by putting some money into that service element. So that's a good thing. Service Element Sixty-five is a reduction. That was formerly Service Element Sixty. It is a reimbursement contract with OHA for when we provide services to an individual, a substance use disorder service to an individual that's not covered or an individual that's uninsured or indigent. And the reality is that Medicaid expansion has really reduced the number of people we're serving who cannot have their services reimbursed through Medicaid. So, and we're also serving a number of commercially insured individuals. So we ask for much less than we had originally anticipated. We do it through a reimbursement, an invoice to the state, and so they reduce the amount.
So, questions?
No other questions, no?
Questions, Commissioner DeRoux?
No.
So, again, real helpful to have the summary sheet. That's really what we were, I think the goal was to kind of understand the process here. And this has given us clarity. It's, I don't remember if we've done this in the prior two years that I've been here, but I know more than I did then by a long ways, as we all do. When you, just from a big picture size, so when you come up with this budget and you then work from the, through the AOC CMHP...
AOC, you got it.
Yeah. Do, so have you, do you spend time figuring these things out and figuring out what you're going to ask? And then you go to the big body? Or is it more like, it's all kind of like getting a mortgage when you don't have any, you just have to do what the bank tells you or...
Kind of, that's probably a...
More like it.
I mean, we certainly, bodies like AOC MHP provide the legislature with information about what the behavioral health need is. We also have a caseload model like ADD, but it's much less sophisticated. That is something that's also being looked at this year because the caseload model they were using to determine what level of need was in each community was based on civil commitments. So it's a bit of a catch-22. If you do a good job and keep people from being civilly committed, you are eligible for fewer dollars. And that's not really an acceptable way to look at mental health need in a community. I think the RHA understands that.
I mean, it's like, that's not really who we're spending most of our time with, really. That's kind of the...
Yeah, it's one piece of...
Failure point or something where you're not, you're not solving it locally, so you're moving it.
Yeah. And ADD really has a very sophisticated model in their workload model forecasting system. So I would love to see something that's more like that, that really looks at the amount of work being done in a community, the population, what the mental health need is, some agreement about how that's quantified. And we don't really have that right now. So that's a long answer to your question, but that's how the amount of dollars is decided. And then we have some ability to advocate for where we think there's real need. And then also advocate for things like policy option packages to provide additional funds for certain areas of focus.
Interesting.
So, Cheryl, if the maximum compensation is at this rate for the annual, it's like five point five million, where does that compare to the prior year?
Compared to the previous year, that is a reduction of... Of about one point six five million. A lot of that being from the Service Element Twenty-eight reduction of one point four million.
Where they're paying it directly through instead of through the counties.
Right, okay, so that's really...
That's the biggest...
Okay, so that's really not a loss, then?
Not really.
Well, about two hundred thousand.
Yeah, two hundred thousand versus, okay, so...
Versus one point six million.
Yeah, it's, okay, so two hundred thousand less, okay, all right.
And we don't know for sure, because we will likely get additional dollars through aid and assist. So we'll see what that looks like.
But currently, so we're looking at like two hundred thousand, okay.
Dave, I have a question legally on these kind of contracts. So there obviously must be expertise at this AOC CMHP part of this.
One C.
One C.
One C.
AOC MHP, anyway, that group. So are there, do county council get involved in any of this at, with negotiating these contracts? I mean, as it evolves or as needs changed or...
There is a Joint Committee of County Councils and Department of Justice that meets for these statewide contracts and hashes through the boilerplate language. The particulars of funding and some of the more intricate provisions often are pass-throughs from some of these organizations that you've been, so the attorneys aren't necessarily coming up with that information. But, yeah, we've had that group. In fact, I was on the original one about twenty-four years ago. We used to meet a couple of times a month, as I recall, in Salem with the two or three DOJ lawyers that were the main ones putting together these statewide contracts.
The DOJ is representing the agencies on these?
Right.
You're working together on, so it's...
Yeah, I mean, there's, at any given time, there'll be a couple provisions that the state tries to sneak in and the county councils push back on. And then we spend three or four months fighting over it, and then we end up where we began. And I don't quite understand all of the logic. It was a lot easier when I was twenty minutes away and I was on that group. It'd be a little bit more of a burden. Actually, the point person for the county councils on that, it's a fellow named Brad Anderson out of Washington County. And he's just phenomenal. He's an assistant county council and does just great work. I trust him imminently, so... And if we ever have any particular issues that are either brought up by the department or that I might see when I purview some of these, I'll call Brad and he gets on it pretty quickly, so... But it's the same contract boilerplate that the other thirty-five counties are getting. It's, we're not, we're not getting anything different than Multnomah or Douglas or anyone else.
Kind of like when we're negotiating with the CCO, you know, with Jefferson and Crooker doing the same contracts we're doing. It's kind of a similar, but it's the whole state negotiating.
These certainly are, yeah. The CCOs are more regional, and that'll be, I guess I just kicked something out. I saw today that Pacific Source did get those other counties. So how that'll benefit us or not benefit us or change the whole structure of bargaining, I don't know.
What other counties did they get?
Marion, Polk.
Really?
And Hood River, right?
They've had...
They had Hood River.
Mid-Columbia, Gorge, yeah. They've had that. So they added two counties. I know it said three, but I think they...
Well, Marion Polk is a single one, yeah.
Interesting. That'll give them more clout in their negotiations.
Well, or maybe more bargaining, you know, benefit that'll pass through to us, I don't know.
Oh, I see.
You know, we'll find out. It'll be a new world.
No, just as, so you've been on that committee? And there's a, so some set of county councils around the state that work on that committee each year?
You get conscripted to it, and if you're not there at the meeting, you get nominated. And, but being on the original one, I have immunity. So I'm only on it.
Well, we'll see.
I'm only on it if I want to be.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. Any other questions, maybe? Okay, I want to do a motion.
I have a question. It said, "Problem gambling services." I don't remember anyone ever talking about that. How big of a program is that here?
We don't have a problem gambling program, except that we treat addiction.
Okay.
So we certainly treat people who have gambling addiction, but we don't have a specific program.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I was like, I'm, hmm, okay. All right, so it's within that addiction treatment?
Yes, I mean, I think some, the funds used to be more, more clearly earmarked specifically for gambling interventions, and some of that changed in the last biennium.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll move approval, board signature, two thousand nineteen dash four ninety-one, IGA with Oregon Health Authority.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
I think all, I think all three of you have bring that in.
Thank you.
Understand it. All right, we'll move on to, the next item is Lee Randall and the Notice of Intent to Award Letter to Sunwest Builders on the Health Services Building. I have to send a quick text to my son.
Good morning, Lee Randall, Facilities Director.
Good morning, Lee.
Morning.
Morning.
Thanks for joining us last night. Thank you. Great to be with you again, Monday last night, and here we are again on Wednesday. So today, you have for consideration a Notice of Intent to Award Letter to Sunwest Builders. Previously, the board had approved the CMGC process, and based on that approval, the Facilities Department conducted a full publicly advertised solicitation process for a general contractor for the HVAC system replacement at the Health Services Courtney facility. Four contractors attended a pre-proposal mandatory meeting. Of those four, Sunwest Builders provided a written proposal and then participated in an interview process, and was ultimately selected. Before you today is a Notice of Intent to Award Letter. If approved, next week, at the end of the protest period, the contract with Sunwest Builders would be processed administratively, and that initial contract would be for $1,500 for pre-construction services. And then, over the next few weeks, Sunwest Builders would proceed with putting together the information for a guaranteed maximum price, as part of that construction manager, general contractor process. Next steps, the next time, we would be back with the board in hopefully about four weeks, with that guaranteed maximum price to be processed as an amendment to the original contract. And some of the things that would take place in the meantime would include, Sunwest would competitively solicit bids from subcontractors for mechanical, electrical plumbing, and then they would also price self-performed work that they would be wanting to take on themselves to self-perform. City of Bend will be reviewing our permit application, which went in last week, and then Sunwest would ultimately compile that guaranteed maximum price. We'd review it with them internally, work through differences and explanations, and clarify what that guaranteed maximum price cost would be. And then, as I mentioned before, in about four weeks, I would be back with the board to present that amendment to the contract.
So, my understanding is, the kind of the, the model of the air handler heating and cooling, and the model of the boiler, and some of that's already determined, which helps you get to this point. When you say the permits are at the, at the city, how much detail is there currently?
So, we have a permit set of drawings that's been prepared over the last several months, with a combination of work with the mechanical engineer, as well as architect, and structural engineer, for some of the changes to the building. So, we have a permit set of documents, those who are submitted to the city.
The design is basically complete.
It is.
Okay, yeah.
What we'll be able to do over the next few, few weeks, which is the big advantage of the CMGC process, is we have that permit set, that's under review, and we'll be able to delve into the particulars with the contractors, and if there are, if there's constructability input from Sunwest Builders and from their mechanical subs, we'll be able to incorporate that into the final construction documents.
Right. Any questions?
I know you went over this in our meeting the other day, but exactly when will this be completed?
So, our target date for 50% of capacity functional is October 1st. Currently, we have approximately 50% of the current units running. We have the ability to start and stop the rest of the existing system, and the idea is to overlap the new system and the old system to provide the heating that we'll need going into the, the fall, early fall heating season.
Lee, then what about the total project completion date, too?
So, our total project completion date, some of that information we'll have available after we've had a chance to work closely with Sunwest Builders. But we expect that would be mid-November to early December. And, but prior to that time, we'd have the heating capacity available. There'll be a lot of digital control work that will be involved in the project, and that, the final installation, commissioning of the system, those types of things, air balancing, all of the things that go into the final warranty product will likely take the month of November, and may extend somewhat beyond that. But the goal is to have the heating system up and running prior to the full heating, winter heating season.
Thank you.
So my, one thought with regard to this, the contract, the CMGC, is that, yeah, that in terms of your input, working with the contractor, would be that, that mechanical company you choose being some, it's very service-oriented, at the end of the game, once it's all done, and all those adjustments that might need to be made, that'd be the one thing I'd be really concerned about, because it just seems like there's so many different zones, and so many different pieces, equipment, heating, I don't know. That's the one thing I'd be looking at closely, so.
Yeah, we're very interested in that, and what we're expecting is we'll have a combination of the warranty period, which typically would be one year following, an installation warranty for one year following substantial completion. Then we'd also have a factory warranty period on top of that. But, from a service standpoint, our goal is to overlap the installation and the service, so we have a smooth transition between those warranty periods.
I don't know, that'd be something I'd be looking at in the contract that's negotiated, because I just think those, I've dealt with some complicated heating systems where you're fiddling around with them forever, it seems like, so, with new, all the new digital, good, so.
We want the heating system to work.
Yeah, and the cooling.
Yes.
Final goal.
Good.
That is the goal.
Take a motion in support of this?
I move for Chair support, a signature for the document number 2019-574, Notice of Intent to Award the Letter to Sunwest Builders.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Thanks a lot for coming, going through this with us on Monday as well. Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee.
Action item is consideration of board signature number on document number 2019-557, Amendment for Oregon Department of Education Juvenile Crime Prevention Services.
Good morning, Debbie Holcomb, for Community Justice.
Thanks for coming. I think this, we put this on just so you could kind of walk us through what this is, so we just, I remember this had come up, I think at a prior time, and we were, or maybe I was at the Lipstick meeting when it was discussed. But anyway, I don't think we're all at that meeting, so we can maybe just go through what it is, and then we can vote.
Sure, I appreciate, as always, when I come and sit through a meeting with the diversity and complexity of all the issues that you deal with, so I can appreciate your interest and need for a little more info. So we are seeking Chair signature of an amendment to an IGA with the Department of Education. This is for a program called the Juvenile Crime Prevention Program. It is an allocation, formula allocation program. So we have about 4% of the juvenile population between 10 and 17, divided by a certain percentage of violent crime that youth commit. So that's kind of how each county's portion is determined. This biennium, we actually got about a 9% increase over last biennium. So we're looking at about $200,000, 201, and some change, compared to about $180,000 last biennium. We do run our plan, so this is a reimbursement-based IGA. It's so much simpler than anything I heard up here.
Yeah.
A, it's only $200,000, and it's, it's very simple. You do the service, you make a plan, it gets approved, you do the thing, you request reimbursement, you provide the invoices, they send you a check. It's, it's delightful. So this year, or this biennium, I should say, we didn't do too many changes to our plan. We did a couple of enhancements, so I'll just share quickly what we're planning to do with that, those funds. One is, the bulk of it really is for functional family therapy, but it's to serve a special population with functional family therapy, and that is youth who have not yet been referred to the juvenile department, but demonstrate risks in two life domain areas. Otherwise, we only have funding for functional family therapy for kids who have already been referred. So that's kind of a cool thing we do, hence the prevention term, juvenile crime prevention. Another thing that we are planning to do with funds this year is to work with the High Desert ESD, and a bunch of other different agencies on a restorative justice pilot in a middle school, probably in the Ben Lepine School District. That's who we've been talking to recently. Restorative justice can take a lot of different forms, but this is kind of, what we're looking at is a way to ensure that youth who have offenses, or crimes, or misbehaviors at school, that may or may not be diverted to the juvenile department, are handled in a way that understands that when a youth does something in a school community, he or she has violated the community, right? Not just, let's say, that other student, or that teacher, and that there's been a rift there. And a good way to kind of bring that youth back, because almost always the youth stays at school, right? So instead of sort of just handling it, let's say, outside, off-site, at the juvenile department, how can we do this in a way that protects the community values, right? And lets the youth back in, lets the victim have reparation, and we kind of work that in a way that keeps the community whole. So, that'll be a pilot that we're working on, which is something slightly new to what we had done with funds in the past. And then the very last thing we're, we're going to do with these funds, I won't get into the detail of it, because it's somewhat tedious in its detail, but what we would like to do, what we need to do, is make sure that some of the risk assessments we are using for youth are actually valid, that they really are predicting the right kind of risk, that they are working. And so we're going to get some statistical assistance from a researcher, probably, hopefully from a institution of secondary higher education.
No, I'm taking it all in.
So, in this particular application, it really doesn't say how the money's spent. It's 200,000. So is there, like, a guide to that somewhere that we could just get? I don't-
Yeah, the, the plan that we had to submit to the state, which is what you probably saw at the Lipstick, so the Lipstick is-
I might have, yeah, I don't remember.
-entity that needs to kind of approve the plan. But I can send you either the entire application, or I can just sort of send the budget that describes the breakdown.
Yeah, just what the money's, what it actually goes to. I don't know how much it needs to be. I mean, it could be whatever works. I'd just be curious, because it's, yeah.
It's definitely important, because you're working with the youth of our county, and to reach them at that point in time. It's like my, the program Friends of the Children, where they pick the kindergartners at the highest risk, and they stick with those for 12 years. I mean, that's, that makes, their, their results are excellent. It's very expensive, but, you know, what you're doing is another important thing.
And this is just a small part of your funding, and, so why does the Department of Education do this little funding thing as, separate from all the other-
Oh, my goodness.
-juvenile? It's just interesting to me.
It's very interesting. I don't know if you recall the Oregon Commission on Children and Families?
Yeah, I do.
So, previously, these funds were administered through that agency. When that agency became defunct, the, their different funds were all allocated to different state agencies. For some strange reason, that really, nobody in the juvenile world quite has ever grasped, it went-
It just ends up over there.
It went to the Department of Education, which was interesting. It was a transition for the Department of Education folks to understand the research and the methods that juvenile justice utilizes with youth versus the research and methods that mainstream education uses with youth. So it's, it's been an interesting, but it's part of a division at the ODE called Youth Development Division, YDD, and they do kind of have a number of specialized, I'd say special needs youth kind of funding. Like, for example, funding, the federal government has regulations related to conditions of confinement for youth in detention, and, you know, states must be in compliance or risk losing federal funding. The person that monitors compliance for all of the detention centers in Oregon is in this division, the Youth Development Division at the ODE. So it's, it's interesting.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Since you're working with these, the youth, risk youth, why in your estimation, have you thought of, why does Oregon have so many foster children? I mean, when you look at the numbers in comparison to New Jersey, who has 9 million in their state, and we have the same number of foster children, and Oregon has 4 million people. So, do you, I mean, do you see anything that we need to be doing differently?
Well, you know, the, I, not from a position of expertise or subject matter expertise, I do not. We, when we have youth who are involved in both systems, which is not as much as you would think, which is interesting. I know foster children are more likely to be victims than offenders, right? But we do, when you get-
End up as foster children.
Yes. When you get them in the same delinquency, or, you know, juvenile crime matter, as well as that dependency foster care situation, those youth are absolutely the most difficult to work with to help change the trajectory of what's occurred. It's like a flip has been switched, or switch has been flipped-
Okay.
-from one to the other, and it's very pernicious. But we are working really well with Deshute County Circuit Court, and ever trying to improve relations with the DHS to sort of collaborate on those youth. But I don't, I don't actually know why there's so many more.
I know, I just was trying to, like, because it seems to be such a problem, and then we were sending them out of state, and, you know, I just, if everyone could think about it, somebody has to come up with a better solution. So, thank you for that analysis. I know our court does a great job with their family court.
They can, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to-
Sure, I'll move board signature of document number 2019-557, an amendment for Oregon Department of Education Juvenile Crime Prevention Services.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Looks like it may be, just be the chair signature on the document.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and taking the time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So that concludes our action items for today. I see we have some CDD, and, Zach, did you have something specific you wanted to do now? We're going to reconvene at 1:30. I've got to go to a, I've got to go provide transportation.
Nick and Tyne are here for the executive session.
Okay.
Whenever the board wants to take that up.
Yeah, so we'll, I've got to go pick up my son and get him to the, from one place to another.
Does the board want to reconvene upstairs at 1:30?
Yeah, so we'll do that. Other, other issues? Okay, good.
All right, we'll continue the meeting.
I think we'll have kind of a, we don't seem to have Commissioner updates on here, but I think we've got quite a few meetings to talk about that we've had in the last few days that-
We did do it.
Well, one is, but I mean, we don't have it here, so I'd like to do it this afternoon. I mean, I can see things we went to yesterday being talked about. I mean, one was, I went to Forest Collaborative, like to talk about that. I'd like to talk about the home, the meeting you went to in the morning. There's, I mean, we've had, it seems like there's been a lot of meetings we've gone to, so.
I got a couple things that I can just talk about, I'm going to do in the future.
Yeah, so let's, let's go ahead and do that during updates.
Okay.
Thanks.